I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold the silence, please. Thank you.
Is adopted the agenda?
There is an addition, an addendum item that you will have to adopt along the way, which is item H2, just an update to let the board know if there is a library or vacancy. And it also occurred to me that it may be appropriate to move J1, which is your legal update, to the evening session when Mr. Mitchell was planning to be here anyway. We might have that as an open session discussion before we go into a closed session. And it looks like T2 would be the best place for that, if the board wants to make that.
Yes, there's no other changes, I would make the motion that we adopt the addendum with those changes.
That's right. Motion made, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, made. Then it's approved. And then, the last meeting.
Yes, sir, I've provided for you in a packet of minutes for the February 4th meeting. Happy to take any corrections if there is to happen.
I only saw two small changes. One's on page four, Stephen Brooks is spelled with a V and it's Stephen with a PH. And then, I think the amount of time that was cited for our recess was incorrect. I think it indicates it was like an hour and seven minutes recess?
No.
From 3:36 to 4:46? But I believe it was from 3:36 to 3:46.
That is correct.
Okay. And that is on page nine.
Any other change?
Does Chairman want to make a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
A second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I also. Public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak, simply raise your hand when recognized. State your name and this is at your front. Direct your comments to the boards. Another player that publicly commented so. Anyone here to speak?
Yes.
Ron Matthews, Jackson District. Just wanted to make a quick go, basically it's a request and it may be a moot point, I don't know, but we've got a budget that's going to be presented to us shortly, I expect. And I've looked around at some of the other county budgets and what I found was interesting, and that's my request, it's going to be valid, is that our budget is very short and concise. I looked at Orange's budget, there's 313 pages. Page counties is 380 pages. Madison County is 144. And Gloucester County is 277. Rappahannock is 18. If you look at these other county budgets, you'll find that there's a lot, they put a lot of information in there, a lot of analysis and charts and graphs, pie graphs such as this, that where you can see digitally where the money is going. You don't have to go through all of these figures and add them up and all this kind of stuff. And I would hope that we can, in our county budget, move in that same direction and that it's a transparency issue to a certain extent. And it's also, for the taxpayers, it gives them something that they can look at and really understand because the way our budget is right now, it's just lines and figures and amounts and it's really meaningless. Thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon, I'm Terry Sutton from the Piedmont District. I wanted to take just a minute to update you on an activity ongoing in Sperryville and to express our appreciation to a lot of state and local folks who've been helping and supporting this. So, on April 27th, Sperryville is doing our first Sperryfest. You may have seen some news on that topic. We're doing it in part out of some successes from a couple activities we did last year. Many of you may remember that in last April, we raced 250 yellow river ducks down the Thornton River in Sperryville to great success and great community engagement and involvement. And then in Halloween, we actually closed the road down for a two-hour Halloween event in Sperryville, which also was widely received by the community. And that's one of them. So we've kind of taken those two activities and the group that was formed from those two events has decided to put on a larger event in April called Sperryfest. And it's going to consist of three separate things. And on April 20th, we're planning to do a Thornton River cleanup. We did it similar last year, we had about 30 people help out. This year, we're anticipating a few more people coming in. We're going to do it on a Saturday morning to help engage people on the 20th. We'll walk up and down parts of the Thornton River and kind of clean it out to make sure that watershed stays clean. It also helps support the ducks the following weekend race down the river. Because Sperryfest on the 27th will consist of two big activities. Building off the success of closing the roads at Halloween, we're going to close the street for 10 hours with the support of all the businesses and all the residents on Main Street. And we're going to put on a street festival. We've been working closely with the Rappahannock County Artisans Trail, reach out to artisans. We're going to include not only artisans but food vendors. And we've been working with the Rappahannock Association for the Arts and Community to talk about music on the same day. So, that's one big activity we're doing. The second activity is the Second Annual Duck Race. We're expanding it this year to 1,000 ducks. I should let you know that what we do is we sell Rappa tickets to the event. So every duck has a number on it, we sell Rappa ticket associated with that number. And we're raising money to kind of help build and support the community of Sperryville. So we're going to race those ducks at 2:00 on the 27th. We shortened the trail, we're only going to go from the Main Street Bridge to Headmasters. We've actually had lots of community engagement on this, lots of folks to thank for their help. People like Cliff Miller and Tom Taylor have offered their parking, both at Headmasters and up on the hill through, because when we closed Main Street, there was a lot of parking down there. Sheriff Compton has been incredibly supportive and her deputies have been fantastic. They were down for Halloween and were really supportive, so we appreciate that. Sperryville Rescue and Fire Squads have both been helpful. At Halloween, they parked their trucks out there to ensure traffic didn't come through and for kids to see what they're up to. Gary has been supportive, he wanted people to sign off on closing the roads, so we appreciate his support on that. VDOC actually was very supportive last year. They have to bring down a lot of gear for us. They have to sign off on closing the road and they have to bring down a lot of stuff for us. And their team at Flatwood was supportive, very much appreciate that. Rappahannock Electric Cooperative has also been supportive. So I just wanted to come here today to let you know the event was going on and to express our appreciation for those who have supported us up to this point.
Thank you. Anyone else, yes?
Good afternoon, board. I know Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Ruth Welsh from Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I've been on the Rappahannock County Recrational Facilities Authority now for a couple years. And I just wanted to update you a little bit about some of the activities we're doing for the community and for the park. Basically, in this last year, we've got a couple new board members, a gentleman named Tori Van Acker, who I've addressed to you before. We've also got a new member, Bonnie Gears, who's moved to the county. She's a recent graduate of the Headmaster Naturals Program. We have put in and announced for this the Dark Sky Park application, which is due soon. We've done a lot of environmental work in the park. We had a forestry management plan done by Kyle Davis, the state forestier, back in July. We implemented a lot of his recommendations, first one being to take down the 12 dead or dying ash trees in the park that were endangered falling on somebody in the skateboard park. So we did that last June. We did that with a very good price from Wayne Woodward Quality Tree Service, so we thank him for that. So we've also done a couple other things. We've had first Rappahannock Conservation Day in the park in October. We are planning some other new events. In June, we're going to have a free fishing day in the Rush River. We've got sponsorship from the Friends of the Rappahannock from PEC, from, let's see, Rush River Fly, Trither Unlimited. We're getting 32 free rental poles, tackle and reels. We're having free fly fishing instruction, I think the guy's name is Roger Fincham, who's going to teach that and tie flying. It's going to be a free event. We're targeting Rappahannock kids and the families first, so we're going to have a cap on the number of free event right tickets. So we're hoping that we can get a lot of interest in getting into the outdoors and seeing what we can do. And we're going to go to the schools and have the information, because it's June 8th, I think school's already out there. So we're going to push this for the schools. We're also, let's see, what else we doing? We're collaborating with the Headwater Stream Initiative to put some riparian buffers along the river that is eroding. We had a consultation by Tom Nigrowski, who's the head of the Prince William Stream Management Program. He's an environmental engineer. And he told us, anything you put down there is going to get washed out of the river. So we're saying, just saved $15,000 for an evaluation on that by his, this one afternoon a couple weeks ago. We're also working with the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative to do some plantings under their power line, the next time they mow, which is about a year. We're also working with VDOC to get some approvals for us to put some prairie trees and native plants around the front of the park. So we've got a lot of initiatives going. In the meantime, we have successfully received several grants. We received $22,900 for a PATH Plan in a Park grant where we put in a shuffleboard court that's out there, a primitive cornhole. We're getting our tennis courts resurfaced as soon as the weather gets better. Also, we're putting in a mini frisbee golf course for level three because the park is just not able to accommodate more. So we're also putting in a grant that should have been approved yesterday and final this month for $14,000 for environmental improvements in the park, native plants, native trees, rain gardens, pollinator habitats, et cetera. So, and that, these amounts plus a little Let's Volunteer Day comes to $37,400 we received from the park. Also, tomorrow is due another grant for $12,750. We had a, one of our grants was denied. We had put in a grant to PATH for two handicap parking spaces and a concrete walkway to the pavilion, and that was denied. So we're going to have to go find some other sources for that. So we're putting that in for planning for that to PATH tomorrow. And also, we've raised $400 or $50 at the Rappahannock Pick and Dose auction. We had a load of hot soil donated from our friend John Happy Alley last fall for a pollinator garden we planted with the help of Rappflow. We've had truckloads of woodchips from Wayne Woodward. And the best priceless gift we got was from, through Mr. Curry, who coordinated with the RSW JL. The trustees are out there now, they've been out there, I think this is day number nine, and they've almost cleared the whole perimeter of invasive trees on the land. So we're going to have to do some more work on it, but it's a really huge start because there were 10 of us back in November and we only got done about 60 feet. And it would take decades for us to do that. So this has been a priceless competition. And also, we get money from the Father Stack Race and hopefully we'll, we've got 95 folks already registered for this year, so we're hoping it will be a good year. So we're just letting you know that we're out there pushing, we've got a good board. We need public support, we need somebody to finish the, to fix the handrail down to the river. We've got a Boy Scout, Eagle Scout that's going to be fixing the stairs up to the tennis court. So there's a lot going on. It takes a while, but you've got to start sometime. So, if you have any questions? And there's a poster propaganda that I put up here.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Yes.
Afternoon. I'm Sheila Brusher here from the Hampton District. First, I want to say how lovely it is to hear all the positive stuff that's going on in our county. It's just absolutely wonderful. Kudos to Ruth and all her hard work and her grant. She's just absolutely amazing. I don't know where she gets all this, it's fabulous. Anyway, I just wanted to make a few comments on the upcoming comprehensive plan. I know we missed our public meeting, public hearing, and that is going to be coming up here soon. It's going to be an opportunity for people to weigh in about it. I'm hoping that people realize that the Virginia Code actually says that the comprehensive plan is supposed to be a general blueprint for it. The specifics get down into other areas. And the whole thing is, this thing has been going on for quite a long time. There have been a lot of negative comments as to people haven't done their jobs, it hasn't gotten done. And I'm hoping that with this public hearing, there will be able to be some things discussed and there'll be some maybe additions to the comprehensive plan draft and to be able to actually get on with it. I think part of it could be using Brenda Garten's exit report as a illustration of how something can be done in a positive manner. In other words, the comp plan is done. Maybe we will have some additions that will go into the one that's in place, put it in place and then go forward with what Brenda did. She said, what is being done positively, what still needs to be done, what we're working on. So she did it very matter-of-factly. And my proposal is to put it in, once we get the plan, then put in place a plan for goals in that four-year period. There's a thing called SMART goals. They're specific, they're measurable, they're attainable, they're realistic and they're trackable. And I think if you put something like that in place to be going forward, I think you'd be in a better place. The other thing I want to close with, something's been on my mind for a while. It's sort of disturbing to hear all the negative complaints and everything, sometimes without a lot of suggestions how to move forward. So there's one of my favorite comments. It says, "Put an eye to those lazy critics that deadweight our society." And I'm sure you're all familiar with it. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the room, in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who actually strives to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat. The man who does nothing cuts the same sordid figure in the pages of history whether he be cynic, pop or mulituary. There is little use for the being whose tepid soul knows nothing of great and generous emotion, of the high pride, the stern belief, the lofty enthusiasm of the men who dwell the storm and ride the thunder." And I hope that's how we can go for it.
Thank you. Anyone else here?
Cynthia Price Stonewall Hawthorne. I noticed there's been a change on here from board docs and who want to send out to the public. The new agenda for the broadband committee's been removed, a new mission statement. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, we had a meeting in Futhenwery and we updated the, we updated the plan so that it's safe, which was expected by the planning commissioner on the comprehensive plan.
Well, there have been changes in that too, that's in place.
Well, as you know, Ms. Price, there'll be a public hearing on the comprehensive plan and there'll be plenty of opportunity for the public to comment on the broadband committee's proposed language as well as any other language.
Yeah, yeah, right. Hearings are the place to do it when the decision's been made.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Often the decision is made before the hearing.
You know, our broadband committee meetings are open to the public. You're more than welcome to come and participate.
I tried that, thank you.
Well, you're more than welcome to come, yeah, because they are open to the public.
It's my understanding if something's on the agenda and it's sent to the public and it's on board docs and there's a file on the board docs, it's not supposed to be changed before the meeting. That's my understanding because that's why some people come.
Well, you should be, you should be happy that you have the most latest and the most recent in that it wasn't something that was just presented to the planning commissioner after its next meeting.
Let me interject. The file that was on board docs is the same file that was on board docs for the last board meeting, it was just carried over to this meeting. So it's not that, it hasn't already been presented to the public. It was presented to the public at the board meeting, at the February board meeting. And then, Mr. Wazinski asked that it be updated for this meeting with the latest and greatest information coming out of the broadband committee.
Well, the last I've heard from the planning commissioner, they've sent a copy of the letter from them. They're doing more work on the comprehensive plan. They're not preparing for the hearing next week.
Anyone else here to speak? Anyone else here to speak? Clear public comments, please.
Yeah, I've been told that if somebody's not writing a letter to the editor to make sure that it's too long, nobody's going to read it. And I kind of feel that same way about our budget. I mean, who would sit down and make a 222-page budget? And so, in my opinion, the simpler things are, the better. And I just wanted to make that comment.
All right, about our school, drop the memo.
Good afternoon, everybody. Very happy to say we are in school today. Looking at the forecast last week, I thought I was going to, it was my last day before we started digging into spring break. So happy to say we made it, all day. So, I'll start off with some student accolades here. Two of our students performed and placed very well in the Lions Club Land Music Contest with Junior Sofia Hernandez actually placing first for her voice in the category of voice and Junior Nino Kirchman placing second for her performance on the trumpet. Also, Nino placed 10th in the state for her performance at the All-State Auditions and she will be performing with the All-State Band in April. So that's a huge accomplishment. Junior Lauren Petty placed second in the Mountain Vista Governor's School Science Fair in Clark Year and she'll be competing in Roanoke next week. Today is the deadline for students to submit their work for the RCPS essay contest in collaboration with the Rapp News and Foothills Forum. The contest was open to students in grades six through 12 and entitled "Our Rappahannock Through the Eyes of the Next Generation." They were seeking submissions of work in the context of Rappahannock, past, present or future, and a panel of judges will select first, second and third place winners from the middle school grades category in grade six through eight and also the high school grades category in eighth and 12th. And thanks to the generosity of the Foothill Forum, prizes will be awarded to the winners and all six winning essays, I'm told, will be published in the Rappahannock News. So we look forward to these publications and congratulate all those who submitted essays. At the school this week, we are celebrating National School Breakfast Week along with Read Across America Week. So our cafeterias are celebrating with the addition of new fun menu items like tomorrow morning's stuffed French toast tassel. And it does meet U.S.D.A. guidelines too, I don't know how they do that. Lots of games, fun contests for students and staff. And then for Read Across America, the elementary school is celebrating Dr. Seuss-themed Spirit Days and special reading events. If you are interested in reading to students, please let me know and we'll be tuning to classrooms for Dr. Seuss's book of the choice. Last week, eighth grade students participated in the Reality Store hosted by the Extension Office. This event is the kickoff of our high school academic and career planning process where students are given a real-life scenario and then must manage their finances based on this scenario. Students then have to visit each of the stations where they were, they're forced to make real world choices about whether or not to buy that sports car or pay their student loan. And then they have to go to each of the booths to make, continue to make choices. I had the pleasure of actually working the personal care booth, so I got to talk kids up on their haircuts and stylus and those brand names, because you've got to look good when you're driving that sports car. Then when they get to the end, they realize they have to take out another job and maybe pay that student loan and return the sports car. But that's the great context that we start off our academic career planning, so they realize in a very real way, wow, okay, this is really tough to manage this checkbook in this way and I only get this much per month. And one student that talked to me said, wow, I feel really, really bad for my mom. So we struck home with that. Also, last week, RCHS participated in the Sandy Hook Promise event Say Something Week. This event is an opportunity for schools across the nation to engage students in awareness surrounding the power of see something, say something. This event helps to empower students to be able to identify warning signs or signals for possible threats and teaches them proactive ways to reach out to a trusted adult before someone can hurt themselves or others. Throughout the week, powerful videos from Sandy Hook Promise were shown to students illustrating the powerful effects that simply saying something can have on preventing serious harm. Continuing along the lines of student safety, a number of events are on the horizon, especially surrounding the issues students are encountering on social media and cell phones. This Thursday evening at 6:30 at the high school, a free viewing of the documentary Screenagers will be shown exploring parents' troubles over social media, video games, academics and the prevalence of digital devices and internet addiction. The film is a comprehensive approach to educating parents and students about the insights, dangers, benefits, psychology and brain science behind screen time and the impact it now has on the development of children in different age groups. You can check out the trailer on ScreenagersMovie.com/trailer and please come out Thursday if you're able to. Also regarding social media, RCPS has partnered with LFCC Workforce Solutions to offer a free social media safety course. This will take place on March 19th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the elementary school. This course will teach parents about what is trending in social media today, how security settings work on all major devices and apps and how to be better able to monitor your child's digital activity. This course will also provide information about what is currently at risk through unprotected use of social media and the internet. The event is capped at 13 participants, so please register if interested. The link is on our website and the flyer is sent home to parents in Tuesday folders, but you can reach out to our central office too to get the link registered. Also, our student, our school safety summit that was canceled due to weather in February, that's organized in partnership with the sheriff's office, we have rescheduled that for April 3rd. The special fundraiser dinner will begin at 5:00 PM with the keynote address beginning at 6:00 o'clock. The keynote speaker again is a local expert on digital ethics, Mr. Joe Shoker outlining the dangerous landscape in the digital world and empowering parents and students to be cognizant of these issues and understand what it means to have a strong foundation in digital ethics. Following the keynote, two concurrent sessions are planned, a seminar on vaping substance abuse to help parents and students understand those dangers associated with each one, as well as tips for safeguarding the home against this use. The second will be a special Alice training designed specifically for high school students. And this would require special permission to attend, but that's designated for the older students and their parents to teach lifesaving techniques in case of an active shooter event. Commit to be Fit will be hosting fun kids activities concurrently with these sessions in the high school gym while parents and older siblings can attend the summit sessions. So they will host, act by popular demand, Drums Alive, keeping grades five and under entertained with other fun games and kid-centered party tracks. And that's all sponsored by Commit to be Fit. Finally, a quick summary of the winter sports. Girls' basketball team won a region Girls' basketball team won a regional game and was one game away from state, and that hasn't happened in many years. Olivia Atkins, first-team All-Region and first-team All-District. We're waiting to hear about All-State, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Carrington, Wayland, and Mackenzie Clark, second-team All-Region for girls' basketball. Boys' basketball, very competitive season. Chad Ellis, second-team All-Region. Richard Lillard, Brad Lillard, and Ethan Sumner were all honorable mention to All-Region. In wrestling, we went from not being sure if we would even have a wrestling team this year to sending six of our wrestlers to state. And they did really well. Jay Sean Yates, Matthew Sisk, Edgar Gonzalez, Lee Reinbold, Dalton Renner, and Nick Riggs D. all got to go compete. Edgar Gonzalez was regional champion at the 220-pound class. Two wrestlers were medaled at state, so that was Edgar Gonzalez and he placed third and Lee Reinbold placed sixth in the state. So we're very, very proud of that little wrestling team. Scholastic Bowl had a solid season with a third seed in the region and they are wrapping up some fundraising to get to Chicago for the national championship there. And they're, I don't know if you had a chance to go to their community quiz bowl tournament, but that was really fun. Participated, I was not that great, but it was interesting and how great the kids were. They, yeah, they won by a whole lot. Finally, we have released the superintendent's proposed budget and ancillary report to go with it. Both are available on the main webpage. The school board will hold a public hearing on this proposed budget at its regularly scheduled meeting on March 12th at 6:30 PM in the high school auditorium. So those are released well in advance with real numbers since the general assembly actually completed it in time. So we plan to release it Monday, hoping, and you know, that would have been conjecture at this, but we have real numbers, so that makes it even better. So as always, thank you for your support of the public schools without which we would not be able to offer the high levels of educational services we do. Do you have any questions for me?
What are your takes for Read Across America?
They're all this week.
All this?
Dr. Gramsley, one question that I see come up pretty frequently is, are there some of the facilities at the school that track, is that open and available to the public at certain times? And if so, is there a way to get that information out there?
Certainly. For the most part, if it's for an event or community event, you do have to go through a facilities use process. Otherwise, if it's after hours or before hours, we do like you to check in with us just so we make sure everyone's safe and everything's up. Yes, again.
There's a big sign at the football field, says when the track is open to the public.
Oh, okay.
It has a time to open.
Great. Thank you so much.
The treasurer's report is included in your agenda packet, similar format as the past month. The cash balance graph shows we're tracking just above the FY 2018 line. I expect us to cross over that line and reduce our cash position over the next several months as we spend some of the fund balance that the board has committed to various projects such as the radio project, which has been really on pause as far as spending for quite a while, and the grant purchase of radios, which that order was finally released. When those dollars are spent, we should see that show up on this graph. As far as expenditures and revenues, the revenues have come in very strong in the last month, particularly the delinquent revenue from real estate. Treasurer's putting a big push on that. You can see the information, I think we're at 98.86% collected on real and personal property taxes relative to budget. It's very strong, a very good indicator. We may collect more than we anticipated, which would have the equal and opposite effect on the graph and trying to push it, push it up. Expenditures are largely in line. We have a few areas that we're going to need to touch between now and the end of the fiscal year. And a lot of those are linked to items that the board has reserved contingency for. So if you see areas that look overspent on a percentage basis and you track back over to the contingency reservation, you can see why that's happening. And we're just not transferring those dollars until we know we have to. So right now, I think there's $67,000 left in the contingency, but it's very likely that there'll be more than that left at the end of the year after all the dust settles. Without, I'll take any questions. All right. Any more questions? We move on to the AP. The accounts payable process does include an invoice for Walker Jones and the amounts of $201.25. That's important that the board recognize that. And as we've discussed at past meetings, it may be appropriate for board members to read into the minutes the declaration printed the same format that I prepared at past meetings and place it in front of you. And let me note that I also identified in this version, in the paragraph at the bottom, reference to the board supervisor contingency allocation process as well. And that's because two items down on the agenda, there's potential for discussion of use of contingency for legal matters related to Brag I. And if you reference both in this case, then you'll be covered from the court perspective, if you need to be covered at all. But belts and suspenders, you can read this in. Again, those are at your spot in your pile of interesting information.
Mr. Currie, you know what the Local Services LLC is for $7,650? Sure it's been explained before. It's on page three. There's two invoices there.
Sounds familiar.
Sorry, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah. That's the firm that calls Leach Ape to Lynchburg Forest.
Well, so you look at that and not related necessarily, but you look at all the other waste management numbers. And I know you're going to look at that when time permits, after you get all our charts and graphs done for the budget, but that's a lot of money.
It's, it really is a critical area and whether we can save money remains to be seen on the trash and recyclables, but important to dig down that path. I'm confident we can save money on Leach Ape and that's one of the first tasks that I will be engaging Joyce to help with, to move away from the open Leach Ape pond that allows us to truck rainwater to Lynchburg, which this year has been very costly.
So we have to read this declaration.
I think it's moved.
I'll go ahead and start. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, dash 3115, page. As a board supervisor member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process and board supervisors' contingency allocation process that included consideration of a payment to Walker Jones and/or Offutt Kerman, which firms provide legal counsel related to the Brag I case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that one or more of the named firms are providing for my legal defense as an individual and/or member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Did I find myself for this?
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, dash 3115, page. As a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process and the board supervisor's contingency allocation process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones and/or Offutt Kerman, which firms may provide legal counsel related to the Brag I case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that one or more of the named firms are providing for my legal defense as a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, dash 3115, page. As a board of supervisors' member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process and the BOS contingency allocation process that included consideration of a payment to Walker Jones and/or Offutt Kerman, which firms provide legal counsel related to the Brag I case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that one or more of the named firms are providing for my legal defense as an individual and/or a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, 3115, page. As a board supervisor's member, I, Mr. Frazier, may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process and the board supervisor's contingency allocation process that included consideration of a payment to Walker Jones and/or Offutt Kerman, which firms provide legal counsel related to the Brag I case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that one or more of the named firms are providing for my legal defense as an individual and/or member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, 3115, page. As a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process and the BOS contingency allocation process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones and/or Offutt Kerman, which firms provide legal counsel related to the Brag I case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that one or more of the named firms are providing for my legal defense as an individual and/or member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, in the public interest.
All right, thank you. So with that out of the way, the introduction, February 15, 2019, mid-month check run totaling $24,340.89 and a March 4 check run for $226,772.71. The mid-month payment includes an invoice for Rexel, which has a one-time approval for reuse mid-month. That Rexel bill is related to the lighting improvement upgrade at the library. And the timing of the invoice necessitated a quicker pay period. You'll see the form attached with my recommendation and the chair's approval for that. So then I'll take a motion to approve the two checks.
The invoices for that elevator, is that for the building office related?
That's our annual, our semi-annual maintenance for this.
Offutt Steril.
It's code required.
Sometimes the building office in the past has used a separate firm to, private elevator.
So we need a motion for each of these or do you need a motion just?
Combined, just combined.
I'll make a motion that we pay bills, accounts payable for February 15 and March 4, 2019.
Second. Motion made in second, all those who think it's aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
That's not. Oh, that's the, I believe. About 100%. Right, so. Next on the agenda is supplemental appropriation request from the sheriff related to two items. One is paying on insurance recovery proceeds from a deer cart accident. And the other is to appropriate funds she received from a grant to replace AEDs that her deputies have, leaving the vehicles. The two items are provided and we're at a point so far in the year after our December public hearing that we're nowhere near the 1%. So I would ask for approval of this supplemental appropriation.
They both be in one motion?
Yes. Just referencing the vote.
I know that we approved both supplemental appropriations, 10204, for the sheriff's Both as presented. Totally agree.
Just reading the penalty. You don't have to end.
Okay. Both invoices as presented, I mean, both appropriations as presented.
Second, Mr. Currie.
Motion made in second, all those who think it's aye.
Next on the agenda is the contingency budget process. Included on this are two items for consideration of the board. One is following from the last meeting, Mr. Frazier and I spoke last week regarding having the board have another opportunity to consider approving the $595 payment to Offutt Kerman. And the second is a request from the BZA with their request and their vote sheet attached for the board to authorize payment of $2,328 to the law firm that supported them during the Williams Tree Service appeal process. So it would be, if the board is of mind to authorize these, I would ask if you also go ahead and authorize payment in the next mid-month check run so that we can get these out quickly. And I'll go ahead and make that happen and we'll follow up the natural transfer subsequent meeting.
So my opinion, these are legal fees and we have a litigation fund and if they are to be paid, they should be paid from our litigation fund, not from our contingency fund, which seems to me ought to be reserved for emergency-type things. So if we agree to pay these, I would like to see them come out of the litigation fund, not the contingency fund. And I guess we don't have a problem with paying them, but I think that we should come out, I think it should come out of the litigation fund because they are legal fees.
And let me just, oh, last year, the board appropriated, I think it was $5,000 to the BZA after the fact for legal fees last year. And in the proposed budget that I'm working on now, the BZA requested $5,000 to be included in their budget for this same sort of thing. Not necessarily litigation, but I also ask for that line item to be changed in name. I have a line item called legal services and to be available to them should they need counsel for an appeal because in appeals, Mr. Goff is representing, the zoning administrator can't represent the BZA at the same time.
I think we had a discussion once before where I opined that the litigation fund couldn't be used to provide legal defense to the BZA. I think I issued an opinion about that, it's been more than a year ago, I think.
So, so we can't take it out of the litigation fund? We would have to come up with something else?
That, the one that's created. The one that's created pursuant to 1520 and that's the one that all these resolutions have been passed through and I think we did a separate resolution last time to appropriate funds for the BZA. I'll have to check my computer and try to dig that up. But I think there had to be a distinction between using that fund that was created to defend the board and some little members and funding that had to go to the BZA. It was, it's kind of a fine point, but it does make a difference. And I'll get, I'll hope Mr. Curry can get that correct.
As far as if you track the dollars and cents to their source, both of these funds are ultimately coming from the fund balance in the FY19 budget. So from that standpoint, doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, it's coming from the state this time.
So do we need to table this until Mr. Goff this time to determine this?
I don't, I don't think, if you were to pay it from the, I'll place it in the contingency fund, it would have the same effect on the overall budget and financial standing for the counties if you paid it from the litigation fund. It's clearly allowed in the contingency fund. So if you're reminded to approve it, I would suggest you just do it contingency.
I think we should go ahead and approve the 595 out of the legal defense fund. I think that would be appropriate and that would be maybe more precise facting. And so I do agree that we could go ahead and do that today. In terms of payment for Mr. Lockaby's services, I don't remember the exact date of that meeting, but I know it was not this past BZA meeting. I believe that the BZA meeting before that where he rendered his services. So I think we need to go ahead and pay that out of the contingency fund.
The statement date is February 13th and it was not this most recent meeting. So what's the meeting for? I didn't see a due date.
So is that in the form of a motion to pay the BZA services payment request out of this contingency fund?
I guess I will, I will clean up what I just said and make two separate motions. The first motion would be to pay the BZA legal services payment request to Mike Lockaby.
At state one at a time.
I'm sorry, that's why I was going to do that. So this is the BZA for $2,328 to go ahead and pay that from the contingency fund.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Open hearing.
Well, that worked out so well, we go ahead and make a motion to pay Mr. Frazier's legal representation for 595 out of our legal defense fund so as to separate it from the contingency fund in the amount of $500.95.
So before I second that, I'd just like to ask, clear up a couple of things that were stated in the past. Number one, this does not include the original $200. Number two, this is considered to be the last legal fee in this respect? It's not? They've been working for several hours, I don't know how many, on the process of why the board should pay for these, so. So there's more legal fees to come from Offutt? Yeah, they probably wasted a couple of hours of this, the board's opinion to start paying, they probably wasted a lot of time. And thirdly, you do not want to use your GoFundMe? I've already used it. I've already, I've already actually paid this, but this 595 would actually be applied to what they've been working on since then because they've been working on 1520 and 1542. That's why the board should provide representation for the minority members. So we've actually wasted money. From that, I'll go ahead and second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Aye.
We still have one vacancy for the Agriculture and Forestal District Advisory Committee. So if you know anybody that is interested in that, they need only be a landowner. So we will have a couple of districts coming up this summer, so it would be nice to have a full complement. We can move the board without a full complement, but I'll keep it on the agenda until we fill And next, under appointments is just an announcement that we have another vacancy on the library board. Mr. Slade has submitted his letter of resignation to myself and Mr. Frazier, who's from the Jackson district, and I did go and check current membership. This leaves no representation for the Jackson district for a library board of nine, of which I make one, so of eight citizen seats and one government seat. There are no, there's no Jackson representative. So I would like some direction from the board on how you want me to be involved with seeking candidates. None of the candidates from the previous pool were from Jackson. There is nothing also that says that they must, we must have distribution of all districts on your representation. So if there's something you want of me, just, I need to know.
You just said there had to be someone from each district?
There does not have to be somebody from each district, but right now we have coverage of all districts except for Jackson.
Over the past 20-plus years that I know of, we've always tried to have some balance. I just, the last week or so I haven't had anyone come up with a name. I don't know if we want to advertise it, but maybe next month I could come up with a name.
And if you do want me to advertise it, which of course comes with a cost, would it be targeted solely to Jackson?
I'd go for someone that's extremely interesting, but he's not from Jackson. Mr. Deagle, Bill Deagle.
Did we just appoint him to something?
He was a candidate most recently when there were multiple vacancies on the library board. There were many good candidates and others were appointed.
Well, if the board, perhaps we could keep his name in the hopper, but if I could, you know, try and beat the bushes in my neighborhood and see if I can find somebody, I'd have come out with a couple of names without spending another penny.
Since it was just such a, it was just last week that he submitted his resignation, correct?
Yes, oh, it was, this was, that's why this was added after the agenda was released.
Did he say after that?
Yeah, I think he, I received it about an hour after the agenda was released.
Building committee, we didn't make this, not to be canceled because we had several members that weren't going to be able to make it and it really wasn't, it was a middle on the agenda. I believe our very next meeting, we'll probably be exploring several things that we can release, you know, work, possible work to, that we'd like to see the board approve. Possibly the connection of a generator at the high school. That needs, that's been on our emergency plan for years and we haven't, we haven't done anything here. The sheriff's office needs to have some work done with the plumbing, perhaps, you know, abandoned in place without the plumbing, the cylinder being used and make something that cost-effective to get the water out of those pipes. But we probably need some board direction here, what else you'd like us to work on.
And we will be hopefully receiving a scope and fee from engineer architect on the plan study, so the condition, condition study and space planning, space use study. And that will hopefully drive a lot of further projects. The other item is the, the short bid that was posted downstairs for the electrical floor. The old admin building closed last Friday, we did receive, they closed, we have options. So I'll be able to bring that to the committee to move that forward if you want to.
Yes. But we'd be open to ideas from the board as far as other projects you want to look at. Mr. Simpson, I want to add a thing.
Just that maybe we need to get another date on the calendar. We feel we have things that we need to consider since we didn't leave any last month.
Yeah, I don't yet have that scope and fee, so trying to push for that to happen and I think that would be the, the next big thing for the group to really dig into.
So the day after we see the day?
Hopefully to keep out of our regular schedule if I can get it before then. Of which the regular schedule, I think, is the day after noon of board work session. So we'd have to change anyways, the 18th.
Yeah, we have a lot of budget meetings coming up this month too.
Which, which also, as it plays out, should be tied back into all of this. It's going to take money to do some of the projects that the board is interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got this litigant already here. I want to thank Todd Summers and Margaret Bond, who are fellow members of the committee who are here this afternoon. The committee met on February 25th, which was the last Thursday in February. And because the planning commission, being the February 20th was canceled because of inclement weather, the committee had a chance to go back and look at its mission statement, which board members of the public saw in our February meeting and revise it to, I guess, sync better with what the planning commission will be considering when they meet on March 20th. And so the edits and additions that you see before you, one is an edit to a current principle and policy that already addresses broadband in the comprehensive plan. And the committee is recommending a new section, suggesting it be added following the transportation plan. And that is the second language, the second edit you see there. And that actually, I believe, is the language from our mission statement, which we presented to the board in February. So the plan of the commission committee would be to appear before the planning commission, like on March 20th, to present this and get their comments and get the public's comments so that it can be incorporated into the comprehensive plan. In the spirit of trying to update this plan, as we've heard from other members of the public, not only here today, but ongoing in commentary, that we just shouldn't be rehashing old language, especially with something such as broadband where the technology is constantly changing. So I don't know if board members want to look at this and make any comment or if they will see it again when it comes back around after, I guess, the public hearing, whoever the planning commission gets up, gets by that.
I'll just note that the state code requires the comp plan to include broadband standards. This is, this work done by the broadband committee is attempting to fill a void that they felt was present that was in the current proposed comp plan, there's maybe two sentences on broadband. And so the committee is trying to fill the gap that's been identified.
This is what you sent to the planning commission?
This is what will be presented to the planning commission and I don't know, Mr. Curry, if, I'm sure they got a copy in advance or is that's in their advance package?
It can be, just to be clear, the planning commission has elected not to hold the public hearing at their next meeting and to contemplate where things stand on the comprehensive plan and perhaps make changes before they go back out to public hearing.
Okay, John, I actually haven't had the meeting.
The, there was some questions to what authorization occurred at the first, at the original meeting where the public hearing was authorized and whether it was authorized for a date certain or authorized period. So I think so, with it not being clear, the chair asked the zoning administrator not to place the ads for March 20th this morning.
So they, they didn't have a clear vote as to what they did that?
Well, it was clear that the planning commission authorized the certain, the particular draft for a public hearing and with the intent that that public hearing occur this past month when it was snowed out. So given that that didn't happen, it must be advertised in the paper again for the next meeting. And the chair declined to have those ads sent to the paper for March 20th. And that's subsequent to requests that were received from, I imagine, more than one entity, but the BZA asked them not to do it.
Well, I'm not saying that they should hold it, but I just wonder how the chairman can unilaterally make that call because that wouldn't work with this board.
Well, you can ask the chairman.
With all the four-year problems we've had in this county in the past, I think we probably should make sure we do that right.
I can't think of any code issues related to whether an ad is placed or not. It certainly doesn't help mitigate citizen understanding of what's happening. I'm sure there'll be many people who believe that there will be a public hearing on March 20th and hopefully the newspapers will clear that up. But beyond that, you have to speak to the, the chair of the planning commission. It was my recommendation to move forward and under the understanding that all input is good input and only when you have a public hearing do people actually step up to the mic. We had many, many, many public meetings of the planning commission and work sessions where there were two or three of us in the room and that's it. As soon as you advertise a proposed document for public hearing, then there's a lot of interest and that's what we want. We want a lot of interest.
I could appreciate that, but I'm just, I'm not, I'm not arguing against anything that you said except for the fact that if they voted to advertise for a public hearing and then the chairman says they're going to cancel that, I don't know what authorization.
I guess the planning commission members will take that up with their chair.
Maybe, Mr. Smith, do you have any insight on this at all?
I did watch that vote the other day and it is a little bit foggy, for lack of a better word, the motion that was made wasn't date specific, but a follow-up question that was posed after the vote did, bringing some specifications that I did think were not clear. So, I mean, I would personally rather err on the side of caution and, you know, if people show up at the next meeting, there can certainly be a discussion of the comprehensive plan without it being a public hearing. And I think it would actually be healthy for this to be on the planning commission agenda for the next meeting before a public hearing so that people, you know, are getting the most current information to comment on. If you are having a public hearing and you have conflicting material, then it tends to not make for the most enlightened discussion. So I was not aware of the decision when I sat down, whether we were going to have a public hearing or not at the next meeting, but, but I can understand it. But if we could, I'll, I mean, I guess I'll talk to Michelle and ask Mr. Slade about including this garbage during our next planning session meeting.
I know that there is interest to have continued discussion and possibly another work session.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else on the broad view committee.
Well, I don't think I can do a better job, Mr. Chairman, of the recreational facilities authority update than Ruth did because it does show how much initiative this group has in pursuing funding for the park and staging activities at the park. So the fire staff is coming up in April and then the Take a Kid Fishing, or the Fishing Derby Day is in June. In addition to the activities, they continue to work on their guiding. In addition to the activities, they continue to work on their guiding documents as well as grant applications. And it's, um, it's a very lively and, um, enthusiastic meeting, so if folks are looking for, um, a place to spend some time, I highly recommend it. The last meeting also included a visit from a PATH Foundation, um, employee that had visited, um, and done a survey with the RCRFA members in terms of helping them target their goals and the areas where they might need help, and that was very informative. But if, uh, folks have time and energy to donate, it is a wonderful organization to get in, in touch with. And I think that it's not just fair to say that the bodies in the park didn't, couldn't do the work that the inmates have done, but the other thing that came with an inmate that you can't put a price tag on is all of the, um, equipment that they are able to bring with them when they do their workdays, um, has really been a huge benefit as well and has generated a lot of excitement about the headway that they're able to make, not just with the bodies, but with the wheelbarrows and the shovels and everything.
Chainsaws.
Chainsaws, everything they're able to bring with them to get the job done. And, um, I'm glad we got some sunshine over there today.
I'll just add one thing. I received a request late Friday, uh, from the vice chair for a letter of support from me, not from the board, and I was clear to that end, for a grant that they were seeking from PATH for a walking, accessible walking loop around the perimeter of the park that's approximately a quarter mile long. And so I, I did send that over the weekend, and I think they had a very tight deadline, so they got the letter and assumed a sooner than the grant.
So that's, that's a quarter of a mile, uh, walking trail. I believe that they're working on to get funding for around the edges of the park and then to accommodate that, because that would be handicap accessible. They're also hoping to get the parking spaces in place and also to make the, um, the restrooms handicap accessible. And Ruth did also very timely, um, document of all the grants that have pursued and, um, been renewed this past year.
You said inmates and chainsaws.
Did you say trustees? I've seen that movie.
I have asked, uh, whether we could potentially get on the summer schedule for one day a week for mowing services, and that's in process.
Does it count?
Well, we'll start with the park, who have limited funds and will go forward. Whatever has been accomplished in the day.
Public Safety Committee, yeah.
Did you? Well, I see Mr. Williams is in the audience today, so I might rely on him for some help with this. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a, um, very thorough discussion of the Public Safety Committee, um, last week, and we had not met toward the end of last year during the holidays. And we only need quarterly, so we have a lot of catching up to do. Um, in particular, we discussed the Next Gen 911 rollout that's being worked on and also, um, the V Tree Power activity that's, um, coming together from Washington. If you see Sandy Carter, when we reviewed the Next Gen, uh, 911 funding that she has been able to secure for all the different pieces of that puzzle, I think all of the grants she was able to secure for that totaled close to a million dollars.
Seven hundred and forty-four thousand, um, new grant, and then there was, um, two hundred and twenty-five thousand already in A F Y eighteen and nineteen bucks.
So there's just yeoman's work going on for the, the grant processes as well as the implementation, which is, you know, a large countywide project. And, um, she's doing a wonderful job. And, um, we had a very good review of all that information. We also talked about the ongoing recruitment and retention efforts countywide, and, uh, when the blue sheets were mailed by the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, they were able to include, uh, information, uh, to, to contact Mr. Williams and how to get in touch with your local fire rescue organizations and offer your time and skills to help, um, help recruit new members for, um, for our local emergency services. And there's a, um, a volunteer, sort of recruitment day, or it's, it's a PATH Foundation-related volunteer day coming up on April sixth. And I know that the Washington Volunteer Fire Department is involved that day with their, um, volunteer day. And some of the other, um, emergency services, uh, fire halls and, uh, rescue squads may be participating as well, but for sure, at this point, the Washington, um, group is. So there's a lot going on with fire rescue. Probably missed something.
We have really two vacancies that we need to fill. The, um, citizen representative, that's, all, all members of the Public Safety Committee that are, um, I guess, permanent members, need to be appointed by the board. So we need, uh, a citizen representative, and we've not had anybody from the hospitals for several years.
And that's two different LEPC and Public Safety Committee, which the Public Safety Committee is part of the LEPC, and then there are additional ones.
Right. So we, so we probably will come back with some names for the board to look at, uh, at a subsequent meeting, since we generally meet quarterly, we're going to have to do something between now and then, hopefully.
The, the way the, that Kevin and I read the LEPC bylaws, um, was that the members of the, the members of the LEPC who are not Public Safety Committee members can be appointed by the county administrator. I'm not sure if you recall that being what happened in the past, but that's what the document says. So, of course, I can take care of that in between meetings if we can seek those individuals out. But I think there, the citizen rep on the PSC is one of your, one of your gaps to determine whether a different number of these.
It's very important that we get that filled.
Or is it filled that are, had that discussion?
The one on the PSC's got to be appointed by the board?
Right. And of course, there was a person appointed historically by the board, and there's been some attendance problems with that. So if you're going to make a change, I guess you would formally, um, recognize that one person is no longer on it and then a new person would be on.
Yeah, I think that the complicating matters with the, uh, specifics. But yes, I, I think that Mr. Curry signed it up, and we should take care of it. Either this member is no longer a member and we have to replace him, or we have to encourage him, and, uh, I'm not sure what the best thing to do is, but he's missed several meetings and they meet quarterly, so they fill in quite a lot.
And I have not seen where the appointment was term limited, so.
I think that I can, uh, reach out again and try and get some resolution on this. Maybe we can make a decision about how we need to move forward next month and, and, you know, advertise if needed and, and go ahead and proceed with another appointment. That's what we need to do. Because I don't think that, that position has been represented in my time, and I started this time last year.
All right. Next item, Rules Committee update. Now, we got a line item, I believe this is also about.
Yes, sir. I was going to say, there probably shouldn't be much discussion here, because we do have a line item of K one, where we're going to be discussing, uh, the, uh, the work that the Rules Committee did. But we do have the, uh...
K one and K two that were announced, uh, coming out of the Rules Committee meeting.
Yeah, we've got both items there. If the, uh, code ethics, if the board wants to take a look at that, then we're going to give you the reestablished Rules Committee. So both of those are, uh, can be discussed in detail, on K one and two.
Is removed, Ron?
Yeah, we, uh, next item again, Mr. Frasier, it's a busy panel.
The Finance Committee, uh, I really think that we need to, uh, reestablish that committee, and we have a draft resolution here. It needs a little bit of work, because someone made it refers to the organizational meeting in February, which, of course, that didn't happen. So it, it will need a little bit of cleaning up, but this is basically what we recommend is that the board appoint two members as an alternate member, which is what the language states, so that, that way we would most likely be able to have a quorum.
At our, at the last Rules Committee, the Rules Committee suggested that the board could refer this resolution to the Rules Committee to massage and take back up to the board at a later time. I believe that's what you decided.
No, we discuss it, yes.
Do you need a motion to do that?
I don't think so.
Well, if you do the next, uh, what, what should be to be established is the resolution.
Right. Once you get through these K one and two, you have the Finance Committee to.
You should have more board on it. And the other item that's been referred to the Rules Committee is the, the agenda, standardized agenda discussion consent agenda, all of that is also waiting in the wings after they finish on the night.
Okay. Legal matters?
So J one, we was moved to the evening or business section, because Mr. Mitchell will be here here now. So it puts us onto new business.
Well, we're hearing it, so we got, uh, on the Rules Committee.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we met, um, a couple of times over the last several months. We met in November, we met, uh, twice in February, and this is the end product, if the board wants to take a look at it. I think Mr. Dolph and Mr. Curry will, will present a, uh, format that is going to be used to approve the code of county code, even though specifically states that it is not admissible by law. This, this is really an aspirational product, which is similar to the Adorn counties, the surrounding counties, they may adapt to something similar. This is, this is close to what they have.
So we, we need to agree to move this to a public hearing, correct?
That's right. So what, what's included in the packet is the ordinance amendment document with the voting matrix that the board would approve that after a public hearing, as well as the, uh, public hearing advertisement for the paper, um, as required by code, so this needs to be advertised to the paper for two weeks. But before I do that, I would like a motion approved by the board to authorize a specific document to advertise for public hearing, and, uh, the Rules Committee recommendation is included in the packet.
As a member of that committee, had I worked on this, I can put this in the form of a motion that's presented here on our intended date.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. Hold it, please, say aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call, isn't it?
Uh, no, because it's just.
Oh, we adopt, okay, I'm sorry. All right, I'll so.
Another vote, aye. Number three, right?
Uh, Rules Committee charter review now.
Charter.
K two. So this, the board approved the Rules Committee by resolution last year, and, um, there was a thought that it should be cleaned up a little bit and broadened to make it clear that the Rules Committee can, can, has the domain to discuss several of the things that have been talked about today, um, and make clear that new Rules Committee, uh, members would be appointed each organizational meeting. So the resolution before you, which would be a, um, a roll call vote, um, would do that and has three blanks for membership, and that's in paragraph one dot A. Uh, the two members that are appointed to the committee and then one member that's appointed as an alternate, as Mr. Frasier mentioned just a minute ago, uh, that would be to help, uh, provide for a quorum in case one of the two primary members is unavailable.
Just curious if the Rules Committee discussed whether or not, since this would take effect until next January when we reorganize, was there any discussion about having a, having an alternate for the balance of this year since there's ten months?
No, I believe, I'm sorry, uh, I believe that if you take action today, this paragraph one A would appoint essentially two member, two potentially the same or new members and an alternate starting today, and then would require a reappointment at the organizational meeting, Jane.
That was our, um, that would have, uh, reason for, for redoing this resolution. I'm, I'm sorry that we, if you had an impression, I guess we wouldn't.
No, no, I didn't have that impression. I was just asking for a clarification.
No, we didn't, I guess we didn't really articulate what we were doing, but that, that was what we considered that this would do is that, um, see, this still has the language of February fifth, so this is out of age, so we probably may be strike that at the top of it, when we get out the actual precedent.
No, well, what this says is, uh, whereas the board previously approved Rules Committee on February fifth, twenty eighteen, and that the board desires to amend the charter, then now therefore be resolved that what's below is the new charter, and what was, you was approved before is to proceed.
Right. We would like to see two members appointed as, as permanent members, and then one, one of our members would be an alternate that we would then have to, uh...
So you always had a quorum.
Right.
In cases of absence.
And we'd be incumbent on whichever one is, I guess, not going to be able to make it to bring that other number up to date.
So if the board is of a mind to approve this and somebody is of a mind to make a motion with that, I'll need three things.
Well, I, I, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution and one of the members that was nominated would be Mr. Welch again. That does, does the permanent name.
I'm sorry, I'm going to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I can do that.
I would nominate Ron Frasier, and has to be continued for the next committee as well.
We're going to have to say, I don't know. I'll nominate Mr. Wasensky to be the alternate.
So if there's affirmation of that, perhaps, Mr. Frasier, you could amend your motion to include all three names and then give second name.
I'll do that. Then my motion would include the three names that were mentioned.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second.
This is a rule.
We finally got to a rule.
Last one, ask me.
Okay, Mr. Frasier. Mr. Wasensky.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Barrett.
Aye.
My also. I guess the next item will be, uh...
Next item is regarding public safety, uh, video system approvals that I need to keep moving that project forward. There remain a number of, um, unknowns with the, with the project, but we're, several items are coming into focus, which is, which is great. Uh, so I've included a lot of information in the packet, and the bottom line is that the board previously approved in the FO nineteen budget funding for a second console for dispatch, there was previously only one, uh, console provided for. While funding was provided, we never, uh, formally approved a change order with Harris, because we were kind of waiting for the project to move forward. In addition... In addition, the Board previously approved the grant, the OEMS grant for 49 portables and a number of mobiles. And that order was recently released. The fire departments or companies had some concern with the standard speaker mic, the propel mic that was included in that order because it's, it's not water and heat resistant. So they thought it was important, as Kevin and I, that those be upgraded to the, the fire mic for those 39. So the order that was released to Harris for the portables under the grant deducted the speaker mics. And then the change order that provided and copied into the packet adds in the fire mics. These are expensive devices. And I'll run through the process in a minute. The other item has to do with the pagers. So right now, the county has a VHF low band paging system, probably around 39 megahertz. And the new system will be VHF high band, 159 megahertz. Those require new pagers, devices one on the hips of the volunteers. So the approval here would authorize us to purchase the 162 pagers off a state contract for all of the volunteers. That number was, was developed from the OEMS survey that Mr. Williams and Mr. Comar worked on to determine the right number for the actual volunteers that need to respond as opposed to those that would like to hear what's happening in their armchair, who could buy a page, who could buy a scanner, which are much cheaper than these pagers. That funding is already in the FY19 budget as well. So this funding is already available and in the FY19 budget, so no new dollars are needed for the console, the speaker mics, or the pagers. Beyond that, there are a number of old Motorola radios that were purchased from a grant seven years ago, that are XTS 5000 radios, that may be Phase Two compliant, P25 Phase Two compliant, and may work on our new Harris system. Kevin is working with our Motorola service contractor to set up a time for them to come out to the county, touch each one of those portable radios, and confirm that they are in fact able to work on our new system. I wasn't sure how much that was going to cost coming into this meeting, and I modified the agenda when I found out it's $1,680. So technically, don't need Board approval to spend that dollar and have Kevin make it happen. So that's all rolled in here. So what I really need from the Board is authorization from a purchasing standpoint, because these purchases are in excess of $10,000, and authorization from the contractual standpoint with Harris for me to make the purchases and to execute the change order to the Harris contract.
As noted.
This is where Mr. Frazier asked me to repeat that.
No, I'm not going to. I'm saving that for later. Is this going to be a roll call?
Uh, it does not need to be a roll call because it's not a resolution or an ordinance.
There's a contract modification. Does that require, that contract was a roll call, wasn't it?
Yeah. You can vote any way you think is most appropriate. I'm happy to be a roll call.
Well, I'll make a motion and Mr. Curry, just what he asked for.
And to be clear, this is not Mr. Curry acting, uh, so, but working with Mr. Williams in several hours to try to bring all this to focus. And, and where this heads towards the bottom pending, the pending outcome of this survey of our XTS 5000s, and I've informed the Board on this, we could have a rather large liability for the cost of portables if, if many of these portables will not work, the old portables won't work. And I'll be back in front of you telling you about that.
Interesting. I, I don't know. I think we ought to be stick with, I think the contract, the original contract is roll call. I think that the change order, this amount of money probably should be in the form of a roll call.
Yeah, and that's...
That's fine. Well, I, I would second that if Mr. Parish would...
Yeah, it's fine to be a roll call.
We're agreed to this, so.
Motion made in second.
So discussion, Mr. Chairman. I just, I exactly hear things three times, Mr. Curry.
Yes.
I won't have you repeat the whole thing. But you said, was it a console, the speaker mics, and the radios are funded under the current FY19 budget?
Right. The FY19 budget includes $100,000 in the burdens and services line for quote unquote radios. And we had hoped to originally lever that money with a grant. Fortunately, the OEMS grant that you received last year, which was a total of 320,000, which half was the grant, 160, has been on the, on the side burner for a while, waiting for the system to catch up to us, which just seems to be changed. And with that, we couldn't go back for more OEMS grant funding because we had that kind of on the side. So as soon as we clear this through, then Kevin is going to be marching off to try to secure additional grants for the remaining radio liabilities that we have.
And that's to be determined through this expenditure of 1680?
Correct.
Okay. Now, following the ball. I don't have any questions.
Anything else? This is a roll call, a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Parish.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Wasensky.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
And I also. Item number four, Fire Rescue EMS agreement amendment, real quick.
The Flint Hill Voltaire Fire Rescue, oh, we have the wrong number, sorry. Remember last year, during the year, the Association came to the Board and asked if they could receive their funding in advance each quarter as opposed to reimbursement, reimbursement style, which is what the agreement stated. And at that time, I noted that it'd be best to update the agreement, but that maybe we should let it set for a little while to see if other items rose to the top, to see if they should be incorporated in any amendment. So the Association has come forward with a request for an amendment, agreement modification, which is included in the packet and provided by the President, Mr. Biba. And that those changes are shown on the screen right here. They essentially ask for three separate changes, all combined into a paragraph. One, memorialize the fact that the Association should be paid at the beginning of the quarter as opposed to the companies who are paid at the end of the quarter. Two, update the way that the Association budget is to be created, whereas the companies, both with the file levy board process and the file levy board looks back at their last year's expenses to set the forward budget. The Association asks for a more typical budgeting process, much like the county uses. We look at its current expenses, what are our needs, and then they make a recommendation based on their current understanding of needs. And the third request is to allow a change to how the, and that's not memorialized here, but it's in the cover letter, change to how the agreement is able to be modified. And rather than having to be signed off by all seven companies and the Association, that a vote at the Association level be allowed to change the agreement. So from my perspective, I am okay with the first two. The latter, I don't think you can do because all seven companies and the Association approve the agreement. And of course, they could, all seven companies and the Association could vote to change the agreement, to allow the Association to do things. I think that'd be rather dangerous. It should be convoluted to change this agreement. And I wouldn't want to set up a situation where one or two companies have an agreement changed without them agreeing to it. So that's where I stand, but I may feel differently. Representatives from the Association are here, and you probably speak to their desires better than I can.
While we're there, the fire levy voted seven, one with the recognition of Mr. Curry.
I understand that.
To adopt the two, but not the third.
Right. But we, we keep the same process for amendments as we, as, as the document originated with. Each, each company goes on with, and then I guess their representatives would also have to certify that the, the chief and the president of the company has the authority to sign that.
Right, by resolution or some recognition.
It's, it's, it's a little cumbersome, but it's really not that much. The record wants to be moved again.
So the information is in the packet today. It's a preliminary matter. If the Board is interested in a change as shown or similar to shown, then I would look for feedback from you. And then if that's the case, Mr. Goff and I can then go make the changes, circulate it to the companies, and then bring it back to the Board for final approval in final form for authorization. And I believe last time, there was a resolution passed authorizing me to sign, and I would update that resolution, authorizing me to sign the amendment.
This may be where I should repeat everything.
Do you just need consensus from us?
Is, I don't want to waste the company's, I don't want to waste the company's time with specific language and farm it all around. If this language isn't good for, generally okay for the Board to even see if they're interested. But if the language that's presented is reasonable for the Board, then we can go through that process to get everybody to approve it, have the Board formally approve it at the next meeting. Or you can formally approve it at the next meeting, and you can send it out to the, to the companies, and they can choose to accept it or not, and...
Well, I'm, I'm okay with it, if it's a form that's sent, but I don't know if any of the rest of the members have had a chance to look at it very long.
But you said levy approved at seven to one, right?
This, this...
What we have before us.
We've recommended approval of it in that form.
I would be inclined to have it circulated through the companies and solicit feedback. And then move forward with it next month.
Okay. And I believe the Association vetted this already through the company. So I think there's school thirds in...
Through the Chief Committee and the Association.
So there's already buy-in from all parties except...
So don't think you're seen.
Sometimes when the rubber meets the road, you don't know what's going to happen, but...
Well, I'm used to having authorized staff for what one?
They're breaking the fast for approval.
So I'll, you'll see this on your next agenda as the modified agreement. And if I can get all the companies to sign it before then, then you'll have, just like when the Board approved the original document, you'll have a full, partially excluded document with only the, the one signature left.
You want to have a form of motion or consensus?
Always welcome a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made in second. All of the favor say aye.
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 I got ahead of myself. Okay, the Flint Hill Voltaire Fire and Rescue Association was using their own EMS cost recovery vendor, which I think is the same vendor we use. But through a series of events, they no longer have that vendor, and they are, have sent the county letter requesting to join our program, which is currently used for Castleton, Sperryville, and Chester Gap. Those three companies approved, entered an agreement with the county sometime back. Those agreements are attached to this agenda item. I've developed an agreement for Flint Hill Fire and Rescue. Mr. Goff has reviewed, reviewed it, approved it as to form. We've sent it to Flint Hill Voltaire Fire and Rescue Company to review, and we believe they find it acceptable. They have not yet gone through the process to, fully go through the process to have their membership and Board approve it and authorize signature by the President and the Chief. But we understand that is, is going to happen shortly. So what I would ask the Board to do, if you find this agreement acceptable, for Flint Hill to work for the county's program using the same exact terms essentially as the three that are on, to authorize me to execute this agreement, as was the case with the earlier agreements that were executed by Ms. Kaiser, once it's executed by, partially executed by Flint.
I guess that's a little right. While we're, I would make the vote to accept this.
I'll second that.
Seems like there's more. I don't understand why they all want on the same system.
Well, just like in everything else, people like control and want to know exactly what's going on. So you lose a little bit of the sense of control if it's through a political rat. But the money flows the same.
Motion made in second. All those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Smith, public forums.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I have brought this idea last year, and I just wanted to float it again in case there was any interest. And then when Ms. Kaiser was our administrator, we had put on several, I thought, very successful public forums at different venues throughout the county. And I'd like to start undertaking them again on a quarterly basis, so it's not so much as a monthly basis. But I do, you know, plan to have one later this spring with or without other board members. And I just wanted to extend the opportunity to other people to participate if they were sort of inclined. And of course, if it's three members or more, we will comply with all the necessities of FOIA. But I just wanted to bring it forward in case there was an interest in, in pursuing this going forward as a Board.
I think it's a good idea. We're going to have a lot of public input in the near future on the budget. So I know we're going to have a lot of opportunity for the public to talk to us about that. I don't know if you think it's better to do it after the budget process or during. We're going to take that into consideration.
I would probably put forward a date in April. And I would probably, I've done the ones that I've done last year. I did on Saturdays. And I think that encourages turnout and try to pick family friendly venues. I know at one point, we were hoping to have one at the park. I'd like to do one over there this summer. So, you know, if three or more members of the Board are interested in pursuing this idea, I'd like to work in the body to, to reinstate holding them on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, I like the idea. The last one that was scheduled was Piedmont, and it was the, the Kansas personal park, you know?
Yeah.
So we never got to Piedmont Jackson or anything.
In, in my former locality, we held these a couple times a year. Sometimes school board representatives would participate as well. And it was much more flexible, and the meetings could move in the direction that the attendees wanted when it wasn't a meeting. You have a lot more flexibility when it's not a meeting. So as Ms. Smith pointed out, if you have three or more, then of course we'll have to go through all that process. But we were, we found it very successful to have to invite school board members, and it might be the, we had at large members, but you know, if it's in Piedmont, it might be the Piedmont representative, both from the Board and the school board, and then invite one of the others, and maybe a joining member, and then you can be very flexible in the conversation and have some back and forth rather than have it more. It just seems to be so rigid when it's a meeting and then you're trying to take minutes and all of that.
So it would be a maximum of two Board members and two school board members.
Correct.
And if another member of one of those two Boards showed up, they, they would have to leave, right?
You, you could be there, but you could not participate and not say a word.
Yeah.
You better be a wallflower.
Right. Yeah, I think that makes sense because given that FOIA and all that stuff is such under scrutiny these days... under scrutiny these days, you know, why get a chance to, you know, raise suspicion? And I think it's great to have all the mangling with the public there if possible. You know, if you have two board members of both boards, that's slightly under FOIA, isn't it?
What do you mean?
Wouldn't it be? He's quoting.
I'm quoting the newspaper that it would have a meeting here, yes.
Oh, I didn't get a chance to read that. Anyway, that's fine.
But as I noted to the board, county administration and other staff, depending on the topics that you want to talk about, whether it's a meeting or not a meeting, just let us know we'll support, however we need to support by providing people or materials, whether it's a meeting or not, just let us know when it's a meeting.
Yeah, I think the last time I had something similar to this in Amosville, we had the school board member there and the planning commission member. So it's not a bad idea. That would certainly make it easier if it's district-related than have all five of us there.
Now, this is another item Ms. Smith put on, cool labeling. That's redundant, actually. It's cool.
This is, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is country of origin labeling or like a truth in human advertising labeling for beef products in particular. It's getting traction in several other states. It's something that was in government labeling regulation up until 2012, when they stopped doing country of origin labeling, but it would be, it would be a useful thing to bring forward to delegate Weaver and Senator Odenchain, I think for next year's general assembly in letter form, and possibly bring in, I think Virginia Cattlemen's Association is the name of the group. But I think that, you know, in working through the comprehensive plan, we do a lot of lip service to supporting agriculture in the county, and if we could work with our representatives to get this sort of legislation in Virginia, I think it would help boy sales of local products. And the other part of the conversation is that there are companies making products that are, they're calling beyond meat, or that they're sort of marketing in the meat department, but that are plant-based products. And I was vegetarian at one point, I don't have anything against plant-based products, but it creates confusion in the marketplace about what people are actually purchasing. And they're finding that these plant-based products are actually driving down beef sales something like 22 percent. And there are several articles referenced in the materials, but it's just something long-term that I think we should maybe develop for next year and reach out, was we were so successful in the letters with the phone lines who are representatives, and ask them to take it up next year. Colorado's done, I believe, Missouri, Montana, there's several states that already have this developing currently.
If it's a tool that our ag producers can use, I'm for it.
Should we get an opinion from the Farm Bureau or something? I don't know, Mr. Parrish, you're closer to this issue than I am.
Well, this is a matter of not where it's beef, but where it's beef from.
Right.
So can't hurt anything to get our representatives involved. And it could just be a simple matter of Mr. Curry writing a letter to those two individuals and making them aware of our discussion today, sign it, move it at that.
Sounds like a very good way to proceed.
If we push this early, then we may have a chance of getting the building, because the sooner we get to December, the earlier we get deals that are pre-farmed. Yeah, well, I know Weaver, he has a lot of cattle, so I'm sure he would be delighted to do something like this, and I'm sure the Farm Bureau would be. He probably wrote it too. Actually, before you write the letter, Mr. Curry, I would call David, Owen Hill, please present for the Farm Bureau now.
Do we think that the time sensitivity is such that it couldn't wait till the next agenda? I think it would carry much more weight if it came from the board and the chair of the board than me, and that would allow me to write a draft and look out, and then I have a letter for you to consider.
Right. And I think it is a good idea if the Farm Bureau could put...
Can you give me that contact?
Yes.
No.
Right.
All right.
That's good.
How it is.
How it is.
As we discussed at the last meeting, the tower test force is no longer in committee updates, so board is interested in me providing an update, and the tower in Woodward Road is under construction actively, and I don't have an update for when it will be completed, but it is rolling forward. Have received contact from CWS that they are working or haven't worked perhaps, don't know if it's present or past tense, with two additional landowners on ground leases for towers in the county, and they would like to meet with Ms. Summers and I to talk about it before they submit any application. So if they're in areas that are in need of service, then I guess that's a good thing. But they would have to go through the entire public process, just like Woodward Road, Tower did, public hearings, and very detailed application requirements. Regarding the radio system, we talked a lot about that. I'm still waiting on the quote from Harris for 800 megahertz sites in the county that I would like to insert into our CIP, I'm going to call it CIP document, because that document has to take a certain route and be approved by the planning commission, or step into CIP. I'm hopeful that I'll get that over the next week or so, and it can be included in the documents that I present when I present the budget. I told you that the portables will be inspected, and that should be scheduled, and let's see. The flyer that we referenced earlier did go out in the mailing, I've placed one in front of you so you can see what went out. I heard from Kevin, he said he has already received, I think, five calls as of last week of people interested in various levels, so maybe somebody's able to just drive an ambulance, or maybe they're an accountant. You never know, the companies need a lot of different service, and it's not just a practitioner, so any call's a good call. So as he gets them, he's forwarding them off to the companies that may be most appropriate. The, I did note that the bid for the electrical work, we have that received and working through the process on that. The Woody Debris Reduction Amosville is done and paid for. The BZA sent their letter, as I placed a copy in front of each of you regarding the comp plan, sent a letter to the planning commission, and copied the board, so here's your copy. They make recommendations as to not follow through with a public hearing. The professional auditing services, RFP, is open and closed, and Ms. Nick and I have listed the offers in order of preference, reached out to the offers to let them know that they're currently negotiating a contract terms with the top offer. That's where we are in that process, maybe get that done soon so we can get on with the business of fire audits, which is only half the group as determined by the board last year, and then have, we're supposed to have a contract in place to meet state requirements by April for York. So we're in a good process there. And relative to telephone concerns, which I also did not include on the agenda, there were only a few issues, none in Verizon, a couple in CenturyLink, and some of them related to internet service that are traced back to CenturyLink's connection with Verizon, and some issues there that are taking a little while to get resolved and causing some concern. And that's all I have on that.
Who's that CenturyLink issue happening? Do you remember?
No, there is a Flint Hill one, I think, one of the commercial agencies, but I think there was another one.
Well, it should get better because they're putting in five all the way.
Right, and as I noted before, I think, unless I said this at the Broadbank Committee, the Connect America Fund Two project that CenturyLink is working on in Huntley-Flint Hill area, as soon as that work is completed this summer, everybody who gets DSL from CenturyLink should see a significant speed increase, because the bottleneck in the past was their back haul over the mountain to their facilities. So when that's all done, even the people in and around Washington should see a speed increase on DSL. That brings us to information correspondence, which we have none, then on to reports, the billing permit report is included in the packet, nothing on the order. I will note that the revenue for billing permit fees, as I'm doing the budget and looking at where we are in the calendar, it's right about in line where we budgeted, about $120,000 for the year, so that's good to know. The county administrator report is included in your packet, as is the VDOT monthly report in the packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry, with respect to the VDOT report, you were working public signage issues on 647, was there any? Should we leave that off? No truck, three trucks.
647.
I'm sorry, I got it wrong.
Yeah, 729. We have not heard back from VDOT yet. I heard from Mr. Nesbit that the engineering study that was sent to Richmond recommended against the no-through-truck signage or designation, but we have not heard back from Richmond. So the commissioner and their folks may not agree with the locals here, and I think our letter was pretty compelling.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Where recesses are.
Yeah, yeah, don't interrupt him, don't interrupt him. Reset. And you get me to motion. Okay. Chair, just a little reset.
All right, reset.
I'm going to write the time.
Okay, first, I have a public hearing scheduled. Presentation on schedule, public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to sit? Yes, sir. How many pages do you got to read?
What?
How many pages, Ron?
One and two sentences.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and it's big print, and the fact that I wrote it down is highly unusual. Ron Mackel, projection district, I wanted to come back this evening and respond to the comment that was made by Mr. Parrish concerning my request for more transparency in the county budget. I feel Mr. Parrish's remarks were not well thought out and seem to indicate that the counties mentioned were rather foolish in what they were doing, wasted time and money. Mr. Parrish, or apparently Rappahannock is smarter than most of the counties, so I'm not sure, but Mr. Parrish might want to look at our school system, who are doing exactly what I talked about. They put together a very good presentation, graphs, whatever, explaining to the people exactly where the money's going and why it's going. You feel that people won't take the time to read it, and you're wrong. People will read it. People are interested. This type of information also would be useful to you all in that, I mean, you have to do the same thing we do, in that there's all these just figures or whatever mean nothing. You've got to put them together in some logical form so that you can understand what's going on. That's what I was talking about. You also made an equally uninformed statement at the January meeting. You indicated in your nomination of Mr. Byrd, the BZA chief planning commission seat, that you wanted to ensure that the comp plan, which was ready to go to a public hearing, would not be delayed. Don't change horses in midstream was your comment. Had you taken the time to read the state code and then the entire comp plan, you would realize that it, in fact, was not ready. This afternoon, after receiving a letter from the BZA based on the well-based discussion that we had at our meeting, the chairman of the planning commission agreed that there are numerous gaps in the plan, and that he wished to postpone the public hearing until they could deal with that. The members of the public that read that plan tend to agree that it's not close to being adequate. In regards to the postponement of the hearing, I would encourage this board to establish a timeframe which the PC must comply with. At this point in time, we have been in violation of state code for a number of years, and we need a viable comp plan now. Thank you.
Ron, you're on the school board, right?
Excuse me?
You're on the school board, right?
I was on the school board.
Me too. How many people are in the central office of the school board?
How many are in what?
The central office.
There's more now than there was when I was on there, but they are, you know, I think there are jobs, they have, you know, jobs to do, and this is the type of thing also that can result in...
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, they got a heck of a lot more people there that can help put that together. They got finance director, they got, you know, all kinds of administration. I mean, you know, we can do that, you might have to hire more staff. I mean, Mr. Curry's got staff, two people up in his office.
That's what the rest of the world does.
Wow. This is not the rest of the world, Mr. Mackel. You don't know what it is.
Well, no, we are the rest of the world. We don't want to be the rest of the world, but in fact, we are. I mean, we're different than everybody else. Everybody else can do these things, and I can't wait for more.
Well, what more people?
If I can interject, we have done that here. We have done the pie charts and stuff.
You know, pie charts and graphs, okay.
It's a difference between, that's a presentation, that's not going to be in the school budget that they give us, and it never was when you were on the school board.
I'm not sure, I haven't seen the school budget yet. Like I said, I've looked at numerous other budgets.
But previously, they have not given us the budget with the pie charts. They have made presentations with pie charts and schematics and things on the board up there and all that, and we've done the same thing, but no, we don't put a budget together with pie charts.
Why not? If you're going to put it in a power point, why not include it in your budget?
We have to pay for the E.
I may interject, last year in my budget presentation, there were the coveted pie charts, and will be again in this year.
But they're not, but they're not in the budget that is online right now, and for someone that just wants to look at the budget and get a feeling for it, it's not there.
He hasn't even presented the budget.
For the FY19 budget, the process that we went through is all on Board Doc, so all those documents through the presentation on March 14th are all still on Board Doc, so if you wanted to go back, backtrack and see that information, it is there. I did not update them for the adopted budget, which is a little bit different than what I proposed.
That's, but that's what I'm saying, is that if I go to other counties and it's right there in plain sight, I shouldn't have to search for it here. And it's, you've got the information, just put it all together and put it online so people can find it very easily. That's all I'm saying, I mean, if you've got it, use it.
Hate to interrupt you, but this is not exactly public discussion, public comment.
Right. I didn't start the discussion.
Only allow them because there's no one else here to comment.
Thanks, thanks for your criticism.
Don't make me do this at all, I mean.
No, I know that, and I appreciate the chance to respond or whatever, but I'm just saying that it's... you know, we've got to come into the real world and do what, I mean, what other people do. And like I said, you've got the information, so include it all. So somebody that moves here, they can look at the county budget and they can, they don't just see a bunch of, you know, numbers. They see, oh, they spend this percentage here and this percentage there, whatever. That's all I'm asking. It's not, it's not that difficult.
Anybody else care to speak? Anybody else care to speak? I call the comment closed. Old business. Review of the interim county administrator's exit report.
At the last meeting, the board requested this, I have it carried over to tonight for further discussion. Welcome that discussion in any direction.
Well, can I press things, please? Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I, we're at the same place, I feel like we were near at the end of the last meeting, where there's basically two roads forward with this. And mostly what we're looking at is kind of the personnel-related items on the list, starting with like policies handbook and kind of trickling down from there to yearly evaluations, job descriptions, you know, all of those sorts of matters that would sort emanate from the policies and procedures handbook, which, if I remember correctly, Ms. May is working on.
Yeah, yes, and she's provided me with a draft, and she's working, like, improving draft. And right now, I'm speaking with her personally, she sits there, she's working on our risk management policies that are linked to our insurance policy, to make sure we have those policies lined up so we have the most favorable insurance rating we can get when we're re-quoted over the next month.
So I guess to my mind, there's two, there's two basics in moving this forward. Are we going to wait and spend the time to do it ourselves in-house? Or are we going to hire someone from outside to do it for us and spend the money rather than spend time? That's, you know, a more succinct version of where I think we were at the end of this discussion last meeting. And, and I don't believe that I have the answer as an individual, but, and I, I just wonder what information is out there that will illuminate our decision.
It can be done either way, and one way takes more time and less money, and one takes more money and less time. One, you probably have a little more control over what you ultimately get and end up reviewing. And they have fewer iterative cycles. The other way, if you go to a consultant, you might get what they just proposed to somebody down the street, and is that right for Rappahannock?
Are we that much different than the other counties?
Well, when you begin to, you look at what percentage of our employees are working for constitutional officers, are those constitutional officers who are going to accept portions of the policy for themselves, and perhaps not all of it, because they're going to want to hold on to the hiring-firing grievance side.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, the employees that we have, shouldn't we just go ahead and do something to cover that and be done with it? And if the constitutional officers wish or wish not to get involved in something similar, it's just like this code of conduct thing, if they want to adopt something similar, well, they, they probably won't, but.
So I guess my answer is, yes, we need to proceed through to having a lawful personnel manual, and we should do that as soon as we can, knowing that, I don't know how long it's been since we've had anything that actually rose to that level, I'm surprised there wasn't one all along.
I don't know that they ever had one, but we did. We, some years ago adopted a grievance procedure, but you said you couldn't even find that, which, I don't.
Which the state code says if, if you don't have one, you use the state one. So we are working on the personnel manual, and it's not going to advance very quickly over the next couple of months, given the budget.
Right. Hopefully, we won't overturn the crazy stuff like legislature.
I'm personally in favor of taking the time and not spending the money, and not just to save money, but also to make sure that what we end up with specifically fits our unique points and needs in scanning.
And I think it would be useful for us to develop something and then find an external expert that could review it and put holes in it. Employment law can be complicated, and it's an area we don't want to get wrong. It's one thing to not have clear policies, and another to have bad policy.
No policies may be better than bad policy, particularly if it's against the law.
So I'm looking at number thirty-eight on this matrix, and it's, there are three or four different numbers that tie back to number thirty-eight. Seems to me if you, and I know you're working toward that, and that has to do with the policy, policy manual. Focus on that, you affect number thirty-six, you affect number thirty-five, you affect number thirty-three. Seems like that's kind of a center of gravity where you might be able to knock a few of these off. Of course, that's probably the hardest one left.
I think thirty-two through thirty-six, I think you're right, you said four.
Uh, yeah, 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 four, five, three, four.
Five or six.
Yeah.
But you're, you're right, because they're all basically related. We don't have policies, we don't have time tracking, and all this is, I mean, I've brought this up time and time again over the years, but it only has some meaning now that she wrote it down a year ago, or a year and a half ago, and we've been talking about it for a long time.
I don't know how long, certainly best practice and a standard practice. We do have time tracking, it's just very different depending on who's doing it and the amount of scrutiny and the type of paperwork used. It just varies, so we need standardized process, and we're working towards that.
We, we had a former employee that left after a number of years, and said, said he was left owing something like thirty-some days of, of leave, but he never worked a Friday in over a year without that. And I find it hard to believe that somebody can miss every Friday for over a year and still have thirty-some days of accumulated leave time, but we have no way to track him.
And I can't speak to that, and we'll see more of that, I'm sure.
And nobody wanted to challenge that but me at the time. You weren't here, I think it was listening. I just, speaking on behalf of myself and several people that approached me, I found that very hard to understand.
Well, I can't speak to the past, all I know is that our employees, in order to attract qualified employees, they have to know that they're going to pay for the time that they worked, and they ought to know the rules of engagement and have a policy.
I understand that, but what we had was a situation where there was no proof that the individual agreed with anyone.
And, and I'm telling you, there'll be more of that.
Well, that's what I want to, I'd like to address that before it gets out of hand, you know. That would be much more important than several things on this list. I know you're busy, and if there's something that the board can do to help, I mean, what is it? Now, put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, other than more and more bodies, it's not a whole lot that can be done.
But if we could do that as a temporary, then maybe.
Maybe if you found the right person. Or you go consultant route, so. I would just assume we wait till we get through the budget. Anything we did in this area would be using one, if you were to spend money, you would be using one-time dollars, and so you could do that any time of year, it doesn't have to be part of the budget. Get through the budget and see if we can focus on this. I don't know how much, I think there's a lot of talk around the comp plan, how much effort is that going to take? And who's going to do that?
There's ways to do that with volunteers, I think.
Maybe.
I mean, the planning commission is basically a set of volunteers too, they get paid twenty-five, thirty dollars a meeting.
Yeah, and trust me, they're not doing any document editing. I know where that's getting down. So we, it's predictable how things will go in that area and in the policy manual area. We know what's happened since two thousand and nine with the comp plan. Kind of goes sideways, so you need to have, you know, focus the tension on, on that for personnel manual, and we are fortunate in administration to have one extra person now, and that's made a huge difference, and that's why we have a draft right now. So if we can wait a little longer through the budget process, then I think we can turn attention on that, unless somebody says we're going to start all over on the comp plan. Then, you know, it just changes the calculus.
I guess what we need to do is put our thinking hat on and come back to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions and the board would like, and all I know is, the one thing I can't do is create more hours in a day, so.
Congress can do that.
Maybe you should ask that.
When do you think is a fair timeline then to come back and revisit this and, and maybe look at a draft of the employee handbook at that time? Would it be June or July?
So you could look at a draft now, but if not, you know, it would have to be reviewed with the understanding that it's not ready for primetime.
Right, and it doesn't necessarily inform this discussion going forward in the states and now.
Uh, well, you know, I don't know. And, and then I do think, at the very least, we want, if V M L has looked at, at it and provided a comment, but I think we do want somebody, some other authority to be reviewing. And I'm not sure who that is right now, whether that's a consultant or.
But does July sound reasonable?
Sure. Not like a deadline.
I mean, I just think that if we're going to put a pin in it, we should put a pin in it with the expectation of one would want to be revising again.
I would like it to be done, I would like the, you know, waste management issues to be behind us, we have a lot of, and we've been knocking them off the list, there's just a lot of them on the list, so.
I understand that, public safety committee, uh, meeting last week, I, you know, shake my head and everything is getting accomplished, or maybe I nod my head, it was getting accomplished. It is law, it is law and work, and I just don't want something to fall by the wayside that's also critically important.
Well, I think, I think to be laser focused, laser focused on the budget, I almost swear that, you know, but concentration of effort needs to be, but that's sixty days, plus a month.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, I think it's, it's very good for us, done all we have done by the, in the fiscal year.
I guess we probably ought to prioritize what we, we think is the list of importance.
Sure. And there are a lot of them on this list, and there are some that aren't on the list. We have a solid waste management plan that needs to be rewritten.
And we need to do something about that.
And we have just the collection and waste that side, that needs to be did.
Any year of a draft, a collection issue could be immediate, with a record high year of, you know, precipitation. Yeah, right. I was, I was going to say, actually, we've, we've just been paying the hall of rainwater, as you, you know, said today, we've been hauling rainwater simply because of where it is, not what it is.
I wouldn't drink it, but.
You did.
Oh, sorry. It hasn't been sitting there.
So I'm, I'm happy to take on the, the challenge of getting that, putting the bow on it by the end of the fiscal year.
Sounds good.
It's reasonable.
Go.
Thank you, Gary.
I'm sure all of us too.
Thank you, Ron.
Hey, that was supposedly item number one?
Yeah, we had, we moved J one, um, earlier in the day, and Mr. Mitchell is here, and, or Mr. Mitchell's been there. J one was a review of legal matters, and it was just a timeline and update of the various cases and where they are, and if there are any court dates coming up. And I've reached out to you to get an update, but it may be better just coming for you. If you could just speak briefly to Bragg two, Wollong and Sonic in an open meeting as to where they are and what the next step is, that would be helpful for the board.
Okay. Can we go from right here? Okay. I think I provided that list. Bragg, Bragg two is the way it's commonly referred to, this case that I'm involved in. The preliminary motions have been resolved one way or another, and the rule selection of the case can be set, a trial after a discovery takes place. The other council has requested dates for discovery. I got, I contacted you all, got you available dates, I've provided that to Mr. Conick, but I haven't heard back as to whether he wants to do those depositions. I've been off for a couple of weeks, and I think I recall seeing an email that he sent recently, maybe indicating he didn't get my email telling him about the dates, but anyway, I'm going to follow up on that. The Zensky case is, they filed a second amended complaint or petition, and I have demurred two of certain aspects of that, and that's set for argument this coming Thursday, seven, I guess that is, one o'clock. And then the Sonic case, pleadings were just filed, I provided you all with a copy of the demurras that I filed to the complaint or petition had been filed in that case, and that's just been done, so that's, that's kind of where we are. The next step would be to set argument on my demurras. There's other, there's also an answer been filed on behalf of the, you, you serve as Commonwealth attorney, on behalf of Commonwealth attorney, who's representative of the council, and they filed an answer and demurras and pleas, and I, my expectation is all those would be set for hearing before the court at the same time.
But it has not been set yet.
Has not been set.
Could I ask a question about the Sonic case?
Sure. Is that something we should do in close session?
I, I don't think this part of it is, but I believe you filed something on behalf of the board? Is that correct?
Yes, the board was, was a defendant in the case along with the several individual board numbers.
Now, that's the question I have, this is the first time that we've met and talked about the Sonic case, so how did you represent the board when you had never spoke to us?
Well, when I'm engaged to defend defendants in a case, government defendants, including the board and individual members, I, my job is to prevent a defense, present a defense, if, if a defense exists. Now, if a case involves factual situations or decisions about what strategy to use, then I would meet with the board to discuss those. In this case, with respect to the board supervisors, they named it, and the style of the case, they named the board supervisors a defendant. There's not one paragraph in that petition that makes any allegations about the board supervisors, and there's not one request of, of any relief from the court as to anything to do with the board supervisors. So if there, if there's just on its face, in my view, there was no case, there was no, no cause of action stated against the board supervisors, and they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be shown as affording the case, and that's the reason I demurred on behalf of the board.
Well, I can understand that, I appreciate it, and I doubt that if we had met, it would have been any different, but I just wonder how you could represent the board when we've never met?
Just like I just said, the one thing.
You were contacted by V M L to represent us, but you had never met with this board, and you filed. You were contacted by VML to represent us, but you had never met with this board and you filed something on our behalf.
That's right.
The board is an entity, and you filed something on our behalf without talking to us?
Well, I remain, I remain to represent the board. I've been doing this, I've been doing this for years.
I know, but it's just, I'm having a real problem with this because of this first way the case were involved. And things keep happening that the board, these people here, say that they don't know anything about, and yet things keep happening. And then all of a sudden, there's a lawsuit that we may or not be involved in, and you filed something on behalf of the board and you've never talked to us. And I don't like to see that happening.
Well...
We are an entity that's a...
There was nothing I could tell the board that, other than, in my opinion, that there's no case been presented against you and, and you should be dismissed.
Well, that would have been fine, but you didn't talk to us.
Well, there, there wasn't any, there wasn't any decision to be made by the board, in my view.
You made that decision unilaterally without talking to us.
So, what did you, uh, listen?
I'm saying there may not have been any difference in, in the decision making, but you did not give us that opportunity as a board.
Opportunity to do what?
To meet and discuss it with us.
Okay, if I'd have come in and said, okay, we've got this case, I've been asked to defend you. The defense is that they haven't stated a claim against you.
The fact is that she would have met with an elected body in common with the beginning and discussed something with us that we were involved in prior to filing something on our behalf.
If I felt that that was necessary in order to obtain the information in order to provide a viable defense to the board, I certainly would have met with the board. But they, there was no factual dispute in this case.
With all due respect, I don't think that's your decision to make when there are five member elected by you. That's my problem. Briefly state it.
I, I, I don't see, I don't see the point, Mr. Frasier, quite frankly. And I've been doing this work for a long time.
Well, maybe, maybe that's the problem that keeps happening in a lot of jurisdictions. But as a member of this body, I, I believe that you should have met with us.
I provided you all with a copy of the suit that had been filed. And all of you got a copy of the suit.
I don't even wanna get the copy of the suit. I would rather get the copy of your respondent pleadings.
Yeah, that, I did send the suit there, but...
But the, but the fact remains, you never met with this board as a body, and we are a public entity. And you never met with us.
I kept the board informed as to what the suit was and that I would be filing a defensive pleading on behalf of the board.
Well, we understood that.
Nobody, nobody came forward and said, we'd like to talk with you about this.
I think that that would be a, just a perfunctory part of the process. That she would, you would come and talk to the elected body that's, that's involved in the litigation. I don't know why this is so difficult.
It depends, it's difficult, it depends on the nature of what the, what the claims are.
It should happen every time.
If you will recall, in the, in the Bragg two case, I came and met with you all. We discussed that in closed session before I provided my pleas. That was, that, that was appropriate because there were several options and strategies to, uh, to select in that case. That didn't exist in this case. There was no disputed facts. There was, there was a pleading that didn't state a cause of action against the board. There's no disputed facts, all the facts are, are disputed.
I, I understand that, but the, the procedure should have been followed the same way. That you should have met with this body. That's my complaint. Whether they agree with me or not.
You made your point.
Yeah, I think he's saying that he didn't want to waste time.
You're just saying over and over the same thing.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know why you don't have a problem.
Well, if, if you wanna yield the floor, maybe you can get the impatience of the other four board members here. We don't know who feel bad, but maybe. I for one, it is a procedural matter. Um, I don't, I don't have a problem with, uh, saving money, uh, by Mr. Mitchell filing, you know, based on his experience, what he thinks is the proper, uh, the proper way to respond. If this thing goes to trial, or if there is an opportunity for, if there has to be a time when he needs to get our facts or opinions or ask his questions, then certainly more than, uh, you know, he's, he's more than welcome to take the time with his board to do that. But it sounded like it was just a preliminary filing or a, you know, procedural matter. I, I, I don't know. Like, I guess I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
It didn't save us anybody, he's working for the insurance company.
Well, yeah, insurance company. Nothing's, you know, I got a, I got a buddy who works for the Justice Department. And every time I say, hey, that's free, what does he says to me? Says, nothing's free, liberal. Nothing's free. I mean, our insurance premiums are probably gonna go up. There's something's gonna pay for this. You just can't, you just can't think that something's gonna happen and there isn't gonna be some ramification somewhere else.
But I don't think that we should sit here as an elected body that represents the people of this county and, and act like clapping seals because somebody simply went and made a decision without talking to us about it.
You, you made, you made a point, and, uh, I understand your point.
I got another comment about the Sonic case, uh, and I'd love to discuss it in an open session. And, uh, and it's, uh, doesn't have any real thing to do, I don't think, with the defense of the case. But I do remember, and I wrote it down back in, uh, December third, and we had a board supervisors meeting. And Mr. Sonic, George Sonic, I got up at, at the, uh, public comment period. And, uh, basically he stated that, uh, that he thought that the deputy, uh, county attorney should, should be hired by the county administrator. Should be, that, that job should be entrusted to, to the county administrator, not the board supervisors. And had that been the case, then this, this suit would not have occurred. And after thinking about it, uh, he has a point, uh, that, uh, I have no problem with the county administrator hiring a deputy. And actually, we wouldn't even need a deputy if it weren't for this Bragg one case anyway. And, uh, once this is over with, we're not gonna have a deputy, to my knowledge. And, but it is possible that sometime in the future, we will need a deputy county attorney. In which case, uh, I propose that we turn that responsibility over to the county administrator in the future. And this is something that we can put on the agenda for next, uh, next, uh, month to discuss and maybe have a resolution to, to that effect. And maybe in the long run, it'll make Mr. Sonic more happy, uh, that, you know, we're following his advice, which I deem, which I, in my opinion, is good advice. So, I wanted to say that before we went into closed session.
Anything else?
Is there really anything to discuss in closed session?
I don't think there is, do you?
Yeah, we, I would rather not go in closed session, frankly. I think that's something to be avoided, if, if possible.
So, we're once again going to pursue this route where different people get different information at different times. We're not all gonna sit in a room together and discuss this case and all get the same information at the same time.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Why did we put it on the agenda if there's not information to share?
I had no idea what you were... I mean, first of all, this is, I mean, Mr. Mitchell's told us everything that probably has to do with this case right now. I don't really...
They didn't really need to be on the agenda.
Okay, I don't know.
It's a deal, I'm not trying to... Somehow get a question answered, how those pleadings were, were made on behalf of the board and the board was never contacted.
I think he made, I think he said that, that we were, we're not accused of anything, so...
It doesn't matter.
So, why would, uh, why would we have to...
The board, the board is named as an entity and the board should have been contacted as an entity.
I, I oughta have designed to go in closed session in here, this one I don't love.
Well, I don't think if you wanna sit there and be a clapping seal, sir, there'd be one. I'll get you a ball. No, sir.
That's a really rotten thing to say.
No, sir.
That's a really rotten thing to say.
It's not, it's not.
Clapping seal.
We, we have been entrusted by the people of this county to be their representatives and then, and then we don't care if things like this happen.
That's not true.
That's absolutely not true. It is, once again, you think that your opinion matters more than everybody else's?
No, sir.
You think 'cause you're louder and you talk longer and you get angrier, that you, that your opinion makes, makes a bigger difference? That you're smarter?
Mr. Chairman, you let this go on?
Well, I'm just a clapping seal, Mr. Frasier, so you call me down here. I'll, I'll have a ball on my nose, and so I think I'll pass it around a bit.
Gentlemen.
This is an example, sir.
Let's go to recess. It looked like it was working both ways down here, but...
Well, I've taken a lot of it over the years. And you sat there about to have it.
I've never called your name, Mr. Frasier. That's new territory, congratulations.
I didn't say that she worked, I'm a seal, sir.
No, don't, don't, don't try to backtrack on this. You just, you just took a whole different level there, calling people names. You called your fellows, you described her a derogatory name, like a circus animal or something like that. Maybe I should, oh, you're a clown, I was gonna say, you, you called the clown.
If you'd like to sit there, if you'd like to sit there and have...
You can only go...
We'll do this office, we serve by some...
I didn't cut you off, I didn't cut you off when you went on and on and on here with our counsel berating him. And, you know, I'm, I've seen this show before. I've seen this shit show before. Yeah, absolutely. The insurance company assigned him to us.
But we did not...
Because we went through the insurer.
I'd like to tell the meeting back to order and I would... Most of them do it.
Get a different insurer then, and you're gonna get a different attorney, maybe. Or else we can just pay out of our pockets, let's just take it to the taxpayer. And the taxpayer, what's the insurance company do? And how do we ever turn you off to?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to conduct a closed meeting. I move that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash three, eleven A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the litigating posture of the public body. Section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eight point seven. Consultation with legal counsel employed or obtained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel. Section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eight point eight. The subject matter of the closed meeting will be George M. Sonic Jr., the board of supervisors of Rappahannock County at all, case number C eleven, eighteen dash two two six.
Okay, this is a roll call vote? Mr. Frasier?
Hi.
Mr. Lozinski?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
I'm gonna say aye also. Let's do it and get it over with. Flie the things down a little bit, anyway. Well, I guess the question is, is there anything new?
Select in that case, that didn't exist in this case. There was no disputed facts. There was, there was a pleading that didn't state a cause of action against the board. There's no disputed facts, all the facts are, are disputed.
I, I understand that, but the, the procedure should have been followed the same way. That you should have met with this body. That's my complaint. Whether they agree with me or not.
You made your point.
Yeah, I think he's saying that he didn't want to waste time.
You're just saying over and over the same thing.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know why you don't have a problem.
Well, if, if you wanna yield the floor, maybe you can get the impatience of the other four board members here. We don't know who feel bad, but maybe. I for one, it is a procedural matter. Um, I don't, I don't have a problem with, uh, saving money, uh, by Mr. Mitchell filing, you know, based on his experience, what he thinks is the proper, uh, the proper way to respond. If this thing goes to trial, or if there is an opportunity for, if there has to be a time when he needs to get our facts or opinions or ask his questions, then certainly more than, uh, you know, he's, he's more than welcome to take the time with his board to do that. But it sounded like it was just a preliminary filing or a, you know, procedural matter. I, I, I don't know. Like, I guess I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
It didn't save us anybody, he's working for the insurance company.
Well, yeah, insurance company. Nothing's, you know, I got a, I got a buddy who works for the Justice Department. And every time I say, hey, that's free, what does he says to me? Says, nothing's free, liberal. Nothing's free. I mean, our insurance premiums are probably gonna go up. There's something's gonna pay for this. You just can't, you just can't think that something's gonna happen and there isn't gonna be some ramification somewhere else.
But I don't think that we should sit here as an elected body that represents the people of this county and, and act like clapping seals because somebody simply went and made a decision without talking to us about it.
You, you made, you made a point, and, uh, I understand your point.
I got another comment about the Sonic case, uh, and I'd love to discuss it in an open session. And, uh, and it's, uh, doesn't have any real thing to do, I don't think, with the defense of the case. But I do remember, and I wrote it down back in, uh, December third, and we had a board supervisors meeting. And Mr. Sonic, George Sonic, I got up at, at the, uh, public comment period. And, uh, basically he stated that, uh, that he thought that the deputy, uh, county attorney should, should be hired by the county administrator. Should be, that, that job should be entrusted to, to the county administrator, not the board supervisors. And had that been the case, then this, this suit would not have occurred. And after thinking about it, uh, he has a point, uh, that, uh, I have no problem with the county administrator hiring a deputy. And actually, we wouldn't even need a deputy if it weren't for this Bragg one case anyway. And, uh, once this is over with, we're not gonna have a deputy, to my knowledge. And, but it is possible that sometime in the future, we will need deputy county attorney. In which case, uh, I propose that we turn that responsibility over to the county administrator in the future. And this is something that we can put on the, uh, agenda for next, uh, next, uh, month to discuss and maybe have a resolution to, to that effect. And maybe in the long run, it'll make Mr. Sonic more happy, uh, that, you know, we're following his advice, which I deem, which I, in my opinion, is good advice. So, I wanted to say that before we went into closed session.
Anything else?
Is there really anything to discuss in closed session?
I don't think there is, do you?
Yeah, we, I would rather not go in closed session, frankly. I think that's something to be avoided, if, if possible.
So, we're once again going to pursue this route where different people get different information at different times. We're not all gonna sit in a room together and discuss this case and all get the same information at the same time.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't...
I mean, why did we put it on the agenda if there's not information to share?
I had no idea what you were... I mean, first of all, this is, I mean, Mr. Mitchell's told us everything that probably has to do with this case right now. I don't really...
They didn't really need to be on the agenda.
Okay, I don't know.
It's a deal, I'm not trying to... Somehow get a question answered, how those pleadings were, were made on behalf of the board and the board was never contacted.
I think he made, I think he said that, that we were, we're not accused of anything, so...
It doesn't matter.
So, why would, uh, why would we have to...
The board is named as an entity and the board should have been contacted as an entity.
I, I oughta have designed to go in closed session in here, this one I don't love.
Well, I don't think if you wanna sit there and be a clapping seal, sir, there'd be one. I'll get you a ball. No, sir.
That's a really rotten thing to say.
No, sir.
That's a really rotten thing to say.
It's not, it's not.
Clapping seal.
We, we have been entrusted by the people of this county to be their representatives and then, and then we don't care if things like this happen.
That's not true.
That's absolutely not true. It is, once again, you think that your opinion matters more than everybody else's?
No, sir.
You think 'cause you're louder and you talk longer and you get angrier, that you, that your opinion makes, makes a bigger difference? That you're smarter?
Mr. Chairman, you let this go on?
Well, I'm just a clapping seal, Mr. Frasier, so you call me down here. I'll, I'll have a ball on my nose, and so I think I'll pass it around a bit.
Gentlemen.
This is an example, sir.
Let's go to recess. It looked like it was working both ways down here, but...
Well, I've taken a lot of it over the years. And you sat there about to have it.
I've never called your name, Mr. Frasier. That's new territory, congratulations.
I didn't say that she worked, I'm a seal, sir.
No, don't, don't, don't try to backtrack on this. You just, you just took a whole different level there, calling people names. You called your fellows, you described her a derogatory name, like a circus animal or something like that. Maybe I should, oh, you're a clown, I was gonna say, you, you called the clown.
If you'd like to sit there, if you'd like to... If you'd like to sit there, if you'd like to sit there and have...
You can only go in trouble.
If we was just office research by somebody.
I didn't cut you off when you went on and on and on here with our counsel, berating the out. And, you know, I've seen this show before. I've seen this shit show before. Yeah, absolutely. The insurance company assigned him to us. Because we went through the insurer.
I like telling the meaning back to order, not...
You haven't had any input on it.
I mostly do it.
Get a different insurer then. You're going to get a different attorney, maybe. Or else we can just pay out of our pockets. Let's just take it to the taxpayer. Unless that pays for it, then the insurance company do it, and even however attorney you want to.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to conduct a closed meeting. I move that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2-311A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation at open meeting would adversely affect the litigating posture of the public body. Section 2.2-3711A.7. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel. Section 2.2-3711A.8. The subject matter of the closed meeting will be George M. Sonnet Jr., the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County at all, case number CL1118-226.
Okay, this is a roll call vote? Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Wozinski?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
I'm going to say aye also. Let's do it and get it over with. Flie the things down a little bit, anyway. Well, I guess the question is, is there anything new?